We want to thank him for his expertise in this area tonight. It has been awhile since the school committee has done a hearing, so my fellow colleague, Ms. Campbell and I are very excited to be doing this and to have so many people here with us tonight. What we're really hoping for is a broad and informative discussion on the K-8 model, a topic of great interest to both me and to Ms. Campbell, as well as so many other people here tonight and those who live in Boston. We're hoping and planning that the meeting will run from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We truly appreciate people coming out on this very warm evening, and I know everyone wants to go home and have a mint julep, as do we, so we will try our best to keep to a timely schedule. Just a few introductory remarks. In light of the district's ongoing work on a new school assignment plan, tonight's hearing serves as the perfect opportunity to consider current school programming and configurations as we look toward the best possible scenario to serve our 56,000 students in every square mile of our city. During the last school assignment process in 2004, the district had a total of 12 K-8 schools, a figure that had quadrupled since 1995 when the district had only three schools of this configuration. Based in no small part on the work of that task force eight years ago, the district now has more than 20 K-8 schools, I think actually. And I want to thank Dr. Johnson for being here with us this evening. She's going to have to depart early as our BU scholars are being honored tonight, so these are all the students who get wonderful four-year scholarships to BU, so another important event happening this evening, but we're glad that she could join us for even a part of this hearing. But I believe with the information she just gave me, I think we're about 26 K-8 schools as a matter of fact, an expansion that answered a clear call heard throughout the community process back in 2004. As Helen Doherty, the co-chair of the assignment work, in 2004 and once again, now in 2012, reported to me, one of our successes the last go-around with student assignment was with the K-8 expansion, a win-win for all it seems. We heard loud and clear from families that they wanted the continuity. As we will hear from some of our presenters this evening, continuity is certainly one important part of a K-8 or 7 through 12 model, but there is much more than only the validity or relevance of continuity. In a recent interview I conducted with Dr. Laura Rogers of the Education Department at Tufts University, she told me that the number-one thing she heard from K-8 students is that they feel safer in those schools than in middle schools. Interestingly, as part of the emerging themes coming out of our most recent community process as part of our school assignment work, participants from Jamaica Plain, Rosendale, Mattapan, and Roxbury, when asked about their school choice preferences, were more likely to select safety over close to home. It is this kind of feedback that tells us to take a closer look at grade configuration that not only makes children feel safer, but also may promote academic gains as well. To that end, tonight we will revisit this topic of grade configuration, taking a multifaceted look at the K-8 model and how it is working in Boston and elsewhere. We are fortunate to have a number of highly qualified educators, administrators, organizational leaders, and parents with us who will share their perspectives on this subject as we work to better inform ourselves and others in the community on what may be best for Boston's schoolchildren. Our first presenter is Dr. Martin West, an assistant professor of education at Harvard's Graduate School of Education. Dr. West studies the politics of K-12 education policy in the United States and the effectiveness of reform strategies in improving student achievement. His current projects include studies of the teacher labor market in Florida, the effects of private school competition on student achievement across countries, and Americans' understanding of and opinions on education policy. His most recent book, co-edited with Joshua Dunn, is called From Schoolhouse to Courthouse: The Judiciary's Role in American Education, which examines the increase in judicial involvement in education policymaking over the past 50 years. He is also an executive editor of Education Next, where his most recent research appeared, which is out on the table for anyone who wants a copy, called The Middle School Clutch. And he is also deputy director of Harvard's Program on Education Policy and Governance, and is an affiliate of the Toddman Center for State and Local Government at the Harvard-Kennedy School. Tonight, Dr. West will present findings from his research on grade configuration and student achievement, so welcome, Dr. West. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you very much for having me and for the generous introduction. So, I'm going to dive right in and just tell you how excited I am that you all, as school committee members here in Boston, are devoting your attention to this subject of grade configuration. Because, let's go on to the next slide. This is an issue that doesn't get a lot of attention, I think, in most discussions of education reform, yet it's one of the most basic issues facing any school district, that is how best to group students in different grades across the schools under your control. And I think one of the reasons it doesn't get a lot of attention is we tend to think that things have always been the way they were, but actually, if you look at the history of grade configurations in the United States, there's actually been a lot of change over time. So traditionally, the model was that there was a single K-8 school, and later a high school added on top of that. The junior high school model, starting in grade seven and running in grade eight or nine, emerged in the first half of the 20th century, and then in the 1960s, a case was made for the advent of the middle school model, serving students as young as grade six. The case for these models was that adolescents had unique needs that would be best served by placing them in a school that was devoted specifically to addressing those needs, that was designed for them in particular, and these changes have been quite pervasive. So 73% of public school students in the United States in seventh and eighth grade attend standalone middle and junior or junior high schools. One interesting note is that the private sector has never been particularly interested in the middle school model. Fewer than 2% of private school students nationwide in middle school grades are in middle schools. So if we go to the next slide, if we begin to say, gosh, grade configuration is something that's changed over time, where we have variation at any point in time as well, how could it be related to the outcomes and the goals that we are trying to achieve? We begin to ask the question, why might middle schools potentially be a problem? Why might K-8 configurations have an advantage? Well, grade configurations that include a standalone middle or junior high school, by definition, they'll require an additional school transition. By definition, they'll also change the relative age of the student's peer group in their school as they're in adolescence, and they'll also typically involve a transition that means moving into a school with a much larger grade cohort with many new peers who may have had quite different elementary school experiences. All those things might be worth worrying about, they might be particularly worth worrying about because we know that early adolescence is a period in which students suffer from reduced motivation, from low self-esteem, from a poor ability to evaluate risks and consequences, and from decreased respect for authority. All of these things could make students more difficult to educate, they might make that middle school transition particularly challenging. Now psychologists have written about this for some times, speculating that there might be a mismatch between the developmental stage adolescents are in and the types of school environments that are provided to them by middle schools. Ironically, despite the fact that middle schools were sort of, the idea was that we were going to respond to the unique needs of adolescents, there hasn't been a lot of rigorous evidence to support this claim. And so what I mostly want to do tonight is to talk about two new studies, one of them that I was a part of, that take advantage of the fact that we have annual data on student achievement now that allows us to track individual students from one year to the next as they progress through different grade configurations between grades three and grade 10, that really allow us to isolate the causal effect of middle school transitions on student achievement. So if you go to the next slide, I want to just tell you what you're looking at here, and then tell you three things that jump out to me about it. The blue line on the slide are the results from Florida, from where I conducted my own work. The green line is from New York City, where a very similar study was done. And what we've done here is we're plotting the achievement of individual students compared to their own starting point in grade three, and we're, these are students who are moving into a middle school in grade six, so they're attending a K-5 elementary, making the transition to middle school in grade six, and we're measuring their achievement relative to students in K-8. So you can think of this as a horse race, where we've accounted for the fact that middle schools often serve different student populations than K-8 schools do. We're putting everyone on an even starting point, starting line, at third grade, and then tracking their progress over time. So the first thing to note is that prior to middle school entry, when students are in fifth grade in a K-5 school, they actually seem to do a bit better than students in K-8 schools. That suggests to me that there may actually be some benefits to being among the oldest students in an environment that also contains very young students. The much more striking thing, though, the second thing on the graph that you notice, is that as students make this transition from a K-5 elementary school to a 6 through 8 middle school, they suffer a large drop in their achievement relative to their K-8 peers. That drop is as large as a half a year's learning, or if we're looking at math achievement here, we also see the same patterns in reading. And then the third thing to notice is that the students don't recover after that transition, so they remain on a negative trajectory throughout their years in middle school, and in particular, in the case of Florida, we're able to study students all the way through grade 10, by which time they've made another transition into high school. One of the arguments that's often made for middle schools is that they better prepare students for that next transition to high school. If that were the case, they might recover at the high school level, and any advantages that K-8 schools show would dissipate at that point. We don't see any evidence that that's the case at all. The next slide comes exclusively from my research on Florida, so I'm no longer showing you that the results are very similar to that which has been found in New York City, and this just shows you results for both math and reading for students who enter middle schools in grade six, as most students do in Florida, but also for those who enter junior high schools in grade seven. And you see the same exact pattern is evident for both groups. The students entering junior high schools in grade seven also suffer a large drop in their achievement, it just happens in grade seven rather than in grade six. It's very difficult to come up with another explanation for what could be going on here other than the fact that the school transition itself is a problem. So if we go to the next slide, I'll just quickly summarize some of the additional findings from our research and that of others. It's been shown that the achievement effects that we just talked about in New York City and in math in Florida are actually larger for low performing students than they are for students who are higher performing. We know that that's the case with many educational interventions, low performing students may have fewer educational resources to draw on outside of the school setting, therefore may be more impacted by what's going on in the school environment. In Florida, we were also able to study the impact of attending a middle school on the likelihood that students would drop out of high school by grade 10, and we found that students who attended middle schools are in fact 20% more likely to drop out of high school by grade 10. If you look beyond achievement and attainment outcomes, and you just survey parents and students about their school environments, New York City's school survey program shows that parents and students report much lower levels of academic rigor and student safety in middle schools than do parents in K-8 schools. Similarly, in Florida, we have data from surveys of principals, and middle school principals themselves report that they have less confidence in their teachers' ability to deal with the students in their schools than do principals of K-8 schools, and they also report higher levels of violences in their school. And then all this adds to a large, I would say, less rigorous in many ways body of evidence that has shown that the transition to middle school is associated with a number of troubling outcomes. So where I end up on this, if we go to the last slide, is that the evidence is increasingly clear that middle school grade configurations typically produce worse student achievement and other outcomes than do K-8 configurations. I underline typically there because we know that there are many exceptions to that rule. We know that there are many high-performing middle schools, we know that there are many struggling K-8 schools, we know that's the case even right here in Boston. But when you look at this issue systematically in many different settings, you really do see this clear pattern, that having a successful middle school is more difficult to do than having a successful K-8 school is. I think our evidence suggests that the transition itself is an important factor in the struggles of middle schools, but I don't think it's the only reason. One of the things in the reason I highlighted that pattern for fifth graders in K-5 schools that I did earlier, I really do think that adolescents may benefit from being among the oldest students in a setting with much younger students, and that's something that could explain both of those patterns. So in my view, districts should consider adopting K-8 grade configurations wherever possible, given financial and physical constraints. I know it can be a disruptive change, not something that can be done overnight, but I'm encouraged by the progress Boston Public Schools has made in this regard over the past decade that Mary just talked about. Oftentimes, when I present this research, people say, yes, we're aware of the challenges created by the middle school transition, but because we're aware of them, we'll take steps to mitigate them. Given that we don't have a definitive explanation for what's going on, I think we should be skeptical of our ability to take steps that mitigate the problem. That being said, when you have a middle school grade configuration and changes aren't possible, I believe it's important for districts to be exploring ways to eliminate the drop in achievement associated with middle schools. Some ideas here could be more extended, school visits and orientations as students are making the transition or prior to the time they make the transition, a better job of curriculum alignment between sending and receiving schools, and similarly, information sharing between those schools. I know that that can be challenging to do in the context of a system with extensive parental choice, but I think it's important to continue to try and explore those options. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. West. I'm going to open it up to questions from Dr. Johnson and from Ms. Campbell.
So I did have a question about the longitudinal data that you had for the dropout. Could you say a little bit more about that? I think that was in Florida.
Yeah, that's right. It is in Florida. So one of the big advantages of the research that's been done in Florida and New York City is our ability to track an outcome like achievement over time and compare students to themselves and really isolate, really exploit the timing of the drop in achievement to make a convincing case that this is a direct function of the middle school transition. For the dropout analysis, that same advantage is present because it's a one-time outcome. So there, we're simply relying on comparing students who attended middle schools and students who attended K-8 schools that have enrolled in grade nine, and we're seeing whether they remain enrolled in Florida public schools in grade 10, and trying to adjust for all the differences that we can. So I would put it as consistent with the achievement evidence, but one level of sort of rigor below.
Okay. Thank you again for coming. Could you talk a little bit about the racial breakdown? Is it, are the students who, are the more likely that middle-class white students are in the K-8 schools, is that the explanation, or did you?
Yeah, so K-8 schools are a bit more common in rural areas in Florida, so as a result, they tend to serve a whiter population of students. But even if you look separately at rural communities in Florida, separately at suburban, separately at urban communities, you see these same patterns within each of them, which tells me that this isn't a uniquely urban problem, and it also tells me we don't have great models in other communities for how you might address it. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Well, I guess my question is really about, is it fair to assume in looking at this data that, for instance, the question about the 20% dropout, is the ethnic and racial thing comparable, so that, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. So the students who attend K-8 schools in Florida and in New York City are not identical to the students who are in middle school students, which is why the achievement analysis, where we compare students to themselves, is so important, and why the dropout evidence, you're right to raise exactly that question. We, I don't know how much of technical detail to go into here, we do our very best job of making, of adjusting for those differences in the types of students that K-8 and middle school configurations serve, and by looking separately in urban settings where you have schools serving very similar populations, and see very similar patterns, but it's a good question to ask.
But your findings, you know, which are pretty extensive, we're looking at the New York City, which is just New York City.
That's right.
Is your conclusion that it does benefit students more ethnic?
K-8 configurations, yes, Mary. Again, we find the clearest pattern is that there are larger negative effects of the middle school transition, by extension, positive effects of the K-8 configuration for lower achieving students, and also for demographic groups who are likely to be lower achieving.
They would benefit.
They would benefit more from the K-8.
Okay, I appreciate you. Thanks for the conversation. Because just to follow up on that, there was a PSYRC member specifically that students of color benefit perhaps a bit more in the K-8 model, is that correct from your research?
So I don't want to overstate the evidence, and so I want to be actually a bit precise. Our best estimate of the effect for disadvantaged, traditionally disadvantaged minorities, both African-American and Hispanic students, is larger than our best estimate of the effect for white and Asian students. That being said, the difference in the size of the effects is not statistically significant. And so that's why, as a, you shouldn't have invited a researcher here, but that's why I'm trying to.
Really very. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming, Dr. West. And next, we're going to have Dr. Kamal Shaukda, Assistant Superintendent for the Boston Public Schools Research and Evaluation, Research Assessment, remember?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Shaukda.
Yep. Good evening, Ms. Tamer, good evening, Ms. Campbell, Dr. Johnson. What I wanted to do is share some of the district's statistics, just district statistics, on our K-8 schools and how many students we now serve.
She heads it up. She heads it up.
So if you turn to the first page, we have two maps here from two different years. As you know, in 2004, when we had the community down around engagement, one of the things we heard consistently was to have more K-8 schools across the city, and in fact, we did go from 11 to, this number should say 26, not .5.
It's 25, Dr. Shaukda.
It's 26.
Oh, it is 26.
It should say 26.
Okay.
I've been counting all day. And the list of the school direction is on the last page, you can actually see which schools we're talking about. As you know, we've had a couple of new ones as well. So you can see that the maps are designed here to show sort of the distribution of the schools across the city, and they really cover each of the zones, including more specifically the circle of promise, but they really are across the city in terms of the spread. And while we've more than doubled the number of schools, if you look at the next page, we've almost tripled the actual enrollment in K-8 schools. So we've gone from something like, from exactly 4,700 students to now more than 12,000 students in the K-8 schools, so we've really expanded the opportunities for students to actually enroll in the K-8 schools. And the diversity is there as well, so when you look at the breakdown of the populations from 2005, 2006 to the present year, you see that we do serve a diverse population in the K-8 schools. There has been a slight drop in the percent of students who are free and reduced students in the K-8 schools from 2005, '06 school year to the '11, '12 school year, so we go from 75% free and reduced to 72%, there's been a real drop. But by contrast, students with disabilities, we've increased those ratios from 18 to 20%. The lep student population is a huge change in terms of the opportunities that lep students have to attend K-8 schools, we've gone from just 4% to 34%. African-American students have also seen an increase in enrollment at the K-8 schools from 20 to 30, and then we've seen some drops for white students, Asian students, 1% of drop, and Hispanic students, 2% of drop. If you turn to the next page, I think here's where, so while we've tried to improve the quality of all of our schools across the country, it is true that within the K-8s that we serve in the district, there's a very large disparity in terms of the performance. So Professor West's study looks at sort of the effect of K-8s within an urban center compared to a rural setting, for example, but I think what we see within Boston is that even within the districts, there's such a large diversity of, at least in terms of student performance. When you're looking at these two charts, essentially, you're looking at the mathematics and ERA performance of the schools, the each one represents a K-8 school, and what you're seeing on the horizontal axis is the median student growth percentile, as measured by M-CAS from last year, and on the vertical axis, you're looking at the percent of students who are proficient or advanced, and the two lines represent the average numbers for the K-8 schools. And so in a nutshell, in a snapshot, you can see sort of the spread of the schools. These are all K-8s, and what we see is that there are a number of schools that are really high flyers, that reach 80% or more proficiency rates, and also continue to see high growth and the semi-percentile better. And then we've got the schools at the other end where you've got 28% percentile growth and proficiency rates that are hovering around a 20% rate. On the next page, we try to provide this comparison of the performance of K-8 schools versus students in middle schools, and here we've broken down the students in a number of different ways. One is just a descriptive of all sixth to eighth grade students in the K-8 schools, and then all the sixth to eighth that have been in the middle schools. And so for example, you can see that in English language arts, you've got 50% of students who are in the K-8 schools who are at the proficient level of advanced on MCAS last year compared to 43% in middle schools. If you look at just the sixth grade comparison for K-8 schools versus middle schools, then you find that in the K-8 schools, sixth grade, 47% of students were proficient or advanced in English language arts compared to 37% in the middle schools. And then again, we have that same comparison, the gap is a little bit smaller, in eighth grade, 57% compared to 32%, but it is true that the performance levels in the aggregate for the schools as a whole do differ. Having said that, if you turn to the next page, the populations themselves are different as well. So within the city of Boston, the type of students who are served in the K-8s versus the middle schools are different, so you can see the difference between free and reduced price lunch students, for example, 77% of free and reduced K-8 schools versus 79% in the middle schools. And there is a handout that was passed out at the end, which breaks down the free and reduced price lunch and the other demographics by school. And then again, you can see that there is a range. I think one of the schools, one of the K-8s has something above 80, greater than 80%, close to 90% students on free and reduced price lunch, there's another one that's closer to 30%. So again, that the range of students who are being served are different within the K-8 configuration. Students with disabilities, again, 23% versus 25% in middle schools. English language learners who are current English language learners or LEP, 27% in K-8 schools versus 33% in middle schools. And African-American students, there's again a 10% difference in the proportions. White students, there are, there is a higher percentage of white students represented in K-8 schools compared to the middle schools. Asian students are about the same, and Hispanic students are slightly overrepresented in K-8 That's all we had to share. There was one thing that came across that I saw, there's, there's a study also from Johns Hopkins that looked, and we were happy to bring this back to them, I'm not very to share at this point, but there was a study by Johns Hopkins that looked at the K-8 middle school achievement differences in Philadelphia in particular, and I think there may be something interesting there as well that may be worth bringing to the committee. And what they did is they looked at, and they found some of the differences that Professor West shared here, which is that K-8s tended to outperform middle schools, but then they broke down the performance of K-8s that had already been established versus K-8s that were part of a ed reform movement. And they find that those differences still exist with the new K-8s versus middle schools, that the K-8s tend to outperform, but most of those differences are accounted for by the student population, so when you take into account free and reduced price lunch students, for example, or social disabilities and English language learners, that those differences may no longer be. So we'll be happy to circulate that to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shaukda. Questions?
I didn't have a question, but I do just want to make a summary kind of practice in a way. So I think that, and Ms. Tamer is the school committee's representative to the external advisory committee, the school taking answer to the assignment, and I think that one of the... the words that come up over and over again, that I think if I'm accurate, has to do with predictability. So one of the things that I think increasingly makes parents nervous has to do with the transitions, which I think Dr. West referred to, these transitions being hard, especially in systems where there are lots of choices. And so families like to be able to see the future a little bit. So when they're enrolling in kindergarten, they're no longer just thinking about kindergarten, fifth grade, they're trying to see where the trajectory is and where they'll go on to high school completion. And so I think that as we think about that, it has an impact on those kinds of transitions. The other thing is I think families want to talk to other families more as their children age in system, and they get to know certain rural families, and they communicate with them on a regular basis to check things out, whether it's about services that are provided or whether it's about, you know, everything from safety to how to find out about, you know, AWC or some type that are advanced or aggressive. And so to the extent that families are together over time, it's not just about the predictability of children and their relationships. I think there is something about how families think about the relationships that they're building with other parents, so that there are other people that they can count on for dialogue and information. The only other thing that I thought about in terms of this topic as a teacher, we started out, I know in my career, mostly with K six schools. And in K six schools, teachers at fifth and sixth grade levels always assumed we had to teach reading. And so literacy was still a major part of curriculum and instruction in a K six school environment. When we went to the middle grade, sixth to eighth, a lot of the teachers were trained in secondary curricular. And so the emphasis at the sixth grade was a great deal more on assuming that a lot of kids had acquired all literacy skills. And so I think that it may be, and this is not certainly imperative, they are likely per from Dr. West, but it may be that in the K eight schools, teachers are better able to address the literacy skills of students who are not on grade level. And so therefore have a set of arrangements materials that can cover kids in fourth grade, fifth grade, who may or may not have, be reading at the sixth grade level. And so I'm not sure to what extent, because literacy is such a huge issue, particularly for kids who can't read fluently at the comprehension at the middle grades, whether or not the shift in moving sixth grade to the middle grade has not had disproportionately, or maybe a negative impact on the emphasis on reading informational texts, like social studies material and other kinds of material that require a much greater set of literacy capacity than when you're just reading for fun or reading nonfiction, mean fiction kinds of story. And then just finally, on the chart that's in the packet that you have, the Irving School is situated, it's not on here, but the Irving is surrounded by six smaller elementary schools. And when the parents came to us, parents from the college, and they, some of them, oh, sorry, et cetera, they wanted K eight schools, I remember, a couple of years ago. And because none of the schools are really large enough, they're very small schools, we created a pathway for any student that happened to be in the, those six elementary schools surrounding the Irving, that they would have automatic rights to the Irving Middle School. And I think that has given the families some, again, back to this predictability, back to these relationships with other parents that you know, and kids knowing each other, and the transitions that kids have to go through, I think has had an impact, so the buzz, it's not listed as a K eight formally, I think that the way most parents think about that transition has to do with the same kind of issues around continuity and predictability and relationship building with students and parents that I talked about earlier.
I just want to really take note here that, to me, this is really one of the major constituents of Dr. Johnson's leadership of this increase of fifteen K through eight schools. Change is never easy, and I think, pointing out by the data, it's not that, I think, Ms. Tamer, I, for a second, think that K through eight is sort of magic, you know, medicine, just making K through eight, it's all, you know, we're done, we can go home. But I think the, really the hard work of listening to what people want and this request for predictability, I think it's a really heartfelt, you know, responsible parent request. So I think that that's, you know, I think really the spirit of our hearing today is, this is fantastic, how do we keep going in this direction? And so we just kind of wanted to have a look at the data, we appreciate you sharing.
And if I could just add one thought about that, I think that for our students with disabilities in particular, transitions and plans for transitions are particularly important. So that's another thing that John Beers has been trying to do, is create these strands that go all the way through from, you know, pre-kindergarten all the way through to eighth grade, so that there are fewer transitions for some of our less vulnerable kids.
Thank you, Dr. Shaupta. So, yes, so next we are going to welcome, I think, actually, Dr. Johnson's comments are a perfect transition for us to have Denise Snyder, Senior Director of Welcome Services for the District, come and talk about that, what parents seek in terms of predictability. And thank you, Snyder, for being with us tonight.
Thank you for inviting me. Yeah, I'm a superintendent of study office. But it's great, it goes hand in hand, exactly what I would, you know, have to say in terms of, you know, my office oversees all the family resource centers for families registered for school or coming for transfers or to ask questions. Not ironically, they come in and say, you know, I want a K eight, I want an elementary, I want whatever, they say, what's the best school? Come on, what's the best school? And going to the best school is the school that's the right fit for your child. And this is a little bit like that conversation, you know, that honestly, when we ask families or we hear from families really about what it is that they want, at the end of the day, they want a good school and they want predictability. They want to be able to look ahead, they get nervous. If they get nervous at all about a K to five, it's not because it's K to five, because of the fact of, oh, I'm going to have to make more choices again? That's the panic they have. And it's not necessarily K to five alone, it might be our early education centers at second grade, it might be the transition to sixth grade, especially if they're looking ahead and saying that middle school for them might be one year for their child, that, you know, they're always in dreams of an exam school for a child, that they're talking about the one year. It could be at third grade, if they have a fourth grade for advanced work. I mean, people get nervous about any of the transitions, and isn't the next school per se, it's the risk of not getting one of their choices for their next school. If they're only looking at fourth grade, or sixth grade, or second grade, it's so close to the time when they were just with us making their first set of choices that, you know, it's hard, hard working for us. So I think that fearfully unknown, it's very scary for families, that's what we hear, there's a lot of panic in people's voices, rather than the exact school where they're going. And so predictability and transparency and looking ahead at a pathway, you know, whether it's like the Irving School or something else, it's really understanding what's ahead for their child and helping them plan for it. That's the largest thing that we hear. I did, and I'll please just copy and or send them to electronically, but I asked Enrollment Services if they would run some numbers for us and actually choices. I don't think it's stunningly clear information around who chooses K eights over other models or more than others, but based on the information that we pulled for 2011 and 2012, roughly fifty percent of the population choose a K eight or a K twelve model like the line. Another almost thirty percent choose a K five model. And then twelve percent choose an early market center. And another eight percent choose a pathway school such as the Irving or maybe the Rudin Rogers or the Anderson to the Harbor type of pathway setting. So I'll provide you with a copy of this, so you can pull it apart some more, but she was able to get this for me yesterday, so I want to make sure you have it. But about fifty percent choose the, you know, a longer continuous model, and I would say with the E E C, E L C, that is the noise we hear a lot. I know that this is mostly around K to eight, but people look very hard at excellent education and what is around to care they're wanting to get in the early years, and have to weigh against the fact that they're not sure where their next educational moment is at in first grade, they're very nervous about that. You would see more than twelve percent easily if they had an answer to that. That is the noise we hear. I think that, sort of switching gears for a moment, I can't help but separate, or it's hard to separate, my own sort of experience as a parent. My child was in her third school, Boston Public Schools, and so, you know, if I can be indulgent for a moment, I'll share sort of the pluses and minuses of that experience. And, you know, we started out in an amazing K five school. It was our first choice, we were really lucky to get it. It's a little school and wasn't necessarily the popular school in our town, but we made hard, hard decisions during our third grade year about whether or not she should stay or take to see mid-band's work if she got into it, which she did. And my husband and I didn't want her to go really, but she kept pushing and pushing, and also it's hard to turn down the big shiny opportunity out there. She was the one that kept saying, I want to go to a big school, I want to go where there's a gym, I want to go where there's a pool, I want to go to cafeteria where they make their own food, rather than us bringing it up and trade it to our classroom. She was ready to grow. And so in some ways, that elementary to middle school opportunity, although it was third, fourth grade, was a good thing. As parents, we're the ones who probably suffer the most. And that's one of the things I also think I see as a professional, is the fact that when families are choosing schools and the child is four, they're very panicked about thinking about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. It's a little bit different when their child is ten years old, but they're looking at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, you know, if their child is big, they're already nervous about the bus, let alone, you know, what their next transition is. But I think that, you know, when we look at grade configuration, and I'm not an academic, I don't have experience, it was great to see the research that someone else has on this. I think it's really, you know, the questions about grade configuration are about minimizing transitions, especially at difficult ages, when maybe there aren't enough seats in all schools that people are most interested in. How do we, how do we take care of that? I think it's really the end of the day. Because, you know, right now, even in the current models, what I saw with my child was, you know, once she then left her elementary to go to her next school for advanced work, you know, and then left again to go to exam school, what happened to the fourth and fifth graders who were left behind at the first school? What happened to the seventh, eighth graders who were left behind? And by left behind, I mean, I think they all won the same opportunities to go on and to, you know, get all of these other opportunities in front of them. And I think there was a lot of emotional loss in what happened. So I think as we look at sort of like magical, it's an answer, is, you know, what happens with all of them? I don't know the answer, but it's, it's something that just lingers out there. As well as the transition challenge about acclimating new students, you know, so because we tend to backfill all of those seats as, you know, kids leave to go to advanced work or go to exam school, we backfill those seats. And then suddenly it's like, oh, A, they got whole, kids have a whole new sense of inorganic experiences and culture and friends, and schools are always like, whoa, whoa, we 've got a lot of work to do with these kids to sort of get them, you know, on our track culturally in terms of the school climate, right? And then I think that, you know, we need to maximize those opportunities for kids to stay together, really, at the end of the day, you know. You know, there's all sorts of advantages and disadvantages for kids who are going in different pathways. Within the day, there's a real loss felt around when they're not together, and they're navigating a level, and one kid is going over here, and I think about, again, the E L Cs, the A D Cs, about, you know, second grade, there's one seat here for this one, and two seats there for that one, and three seats over there for that one, they're not traveling together, and they're six and seven years old. So, you know, so that's, that's the noise I hear in that sort of my experience as a parent, is that we just need to be a lot more thoughtful about the transitions and about opportunities to keep children together during those pathways and making them very predictable.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. I think that's an excellent point, and I appreciate you sharing your view as a parent as well, because I think that in addition to looking at data, you know, it's also those factors that can't be so easily measured that we also need to, and how do you measure how safe one feels, how do you measure how secure one feels in school? So I think that you raise an excellent point, so we really appreciate you being here and sharing that with us tonight.
I know, I appreciate it.
I know, we want to be sure we're able to talk, so thank you. Thank you so much. So next, we will invite our principal panel. We are very pleased to have with us Eileen Nash from the Beethoven Orenberger, Mary Driscoll from the Edison K through eight, and Dr. Alexandra Montez McNeil from the very new Uman K through eight. Thank you all for being here tonight. I think we need one more chair for you. Thank you. Thank you for being with us this evening, and I know that you are all sort of share the fact that you have taken over schools that have transitioned to becoming K through eight, so if there are pieces of that experience that you would like to share with us, that would be fantastic.
Thank you for having me. I'm Eileen Nash, the principal of the Beethoven and the Orenberger. My model is a feeder school model, so I'll speak to my experience with that. In 2003, when I was appointed the principal of the Beethoven, it was a K two through five school that was under chosen. I couldn't even fill my seats in fifth grade, I had classes of sixteen and seventeen because we just couldn't fill the seats. We were in competition with two successful sister schools, two successful strong parochial schools, and then very strong charter schools. And the charter schools taught us a lesson back then in 2003 and '04, they started to drop their enrollment and take the kids out of our fifth grade. And the parents knew back in 2004 that the kids would go from fifth grade all the way to high school in many of the charter schools in my area. I had to stay marketable. It was the parents that came to me and said, we love your elementary, but, is the big but. I also want to say that they became the stakeholders, and they also, I had a lab cluster in the Beethoven at the time. And in 2004, it was the special needs lab cluster parents that put in the design of our transition model, that we would have a pathway for the lab clusters along with every other student, so that we would have kindergarten to eighth grade lab cluster that coincided with my regular strand, so we were pretty proud about that. What that's done is created what Dr. Johnson referenced in the Rosedale area, schools that have to like access maybe Irving and how to make that work. I'll speak to the feeder school model and say that it's really an alignment that has to happen. You have to have a vertical alignment, not only with your curriculum, but also with your professional development, your teachers. All of our teachers have professional development together. What's the outcome of that? Well, we've had, on our waiting list alone, we've, right now, I have four hundred students between my Beethoven and Orenberger, and back in 2003, I couldn't fill the seats. I also get, for the second year in a row, thirty-five students into exam schools at the sixth grade level, and in my first year in fifth grade, we've gotten five students out of ninety-nine students into the Orion School. So we're successful. In the formative assessments, we've also seen that, to be specific, we've had grades three, five, six, seven, and eight in E L A, scoring the proficient range in the second formative assessment bars. So you're seeing the gains. What else are you seeing? The role models of the older kids with the younger kids. The parents were very frightened that the younger kids were going to be amongst the older kids. We have a mentoring program where our middle school students give up their free time and go out and have lunch with the students that are struggling with conflict resolution in the playground. The eighth grader's have come back to still do their recess today and tomorrow with the younger kids. You don't see the same type of discipline problems at a K to eight that you do see, I think, in the other maybe middle schools. The reason being that the students, you betted on that they are the role models, and these are, they're younger brothers and sisters, and they take that role on honorably. I like to say that we keep the students in our buildings, kids, as long as possible. When they walk in and they put our uniforms on, they come in that front. When they walk in and they put our uniforms on, they come in that front door and they're allowed to be kids with the extra responsibility of being role models. I think the key is for the parents is that they want what's best for the kids and they want their choice, they want safety, but they want to know what Dr. Johnson also said was the predictability. And if they know that the curriculum and the safety is going to be in place and they can predict it, they feel better. The feeder school models do work. It's a lot of work as long as the alignment's there.
Thank you. Ms. Driscoll.
I'm Mary Driscoll. I'm the principal of the Edison K eight school. And I think one perspective that I can bring to this discussion is that for the first 25 years of my career as an educator, I was one of those, I think, few people who were really, really committed to middle school. Those are my people. I love middle school students. And in 2008, when I accepted the appointment as principal of the Edison Middle School, I felt like I was in exactly the place I wanted to be. And then about six weeks later, I learned that the Edison was going to be part of the pathway expansion and we would merge and become a K to eight school. And so, my learning curve has been really steep around just learning how you work with younger students. But I, from someone who is totally dedicated to making sure that the middle school students have the kind of opportunities that are going to allow them to become the best people they can be, I feel after three years in a K to eight that there are definite advantages of the K to eight model. The Edison is a large K to eight with 850 students. It's a high poverty school. 83% of our students are free or use lunch. 40% are English language learners and 23% are students with special needs. The ability to partner with students and families for 10 years, both on the academic side and do some of the remediation that Dr. Johnson talked about with, you know, being able to reach back with the sixth graders to access a reading intervention that, you know, maybe a fourth grade teacher knows. And also to partner with them around support services. You know, often it takes almost a whole school year to figure out what a family really needs and define the services and connect them with those services, whether they're healthcare related or mental health related. And in a K to eight, you know, rather than working with those families for just three years, now I have the opportunity to work with them for 10 years. And so, the potential for really creating change, not just for the students, but for the whole family's aspect feels so much greater. In terms of curriculum, I think the opportunities to vertically align both the curriculum and the pedagogy in a school are just so much greater when you're in a K to eight school. When I was a middle school teacher or a middle school administrator, typically, we would get sixth graders coming from 15 different elementary schools into a middle school. And so, you had students that had 15 different experiences of how they learned reading, how they learned mathematics. And sometimes you would just wonder, you know, what in fact did they learn, you know, how they were taught. And in the K to eight, you don't really need to wonder because you can, you know, it's all happening within your building. Teachers can have conversations across grades. And then, like I mean, the opportunities we've been able to discover for really powerful mentoring opportunities for middle school students. And those are the kinds of things that young adolescents really need in order to help them grow into healthy young adults. So being able to set up mentoring that doesn't require students to leave the building and spend travel time in an already short day is just an amazing opportunity. I think having a large K to eight has the added advantage of being able to have the middle school component be big enough that you can still offer a full range of both the academic coursework and the extracurricular activities that are what middle school students need. And so, at the Edison, our middle school student population is roughly the same size as it was when we were the Edison Middle Schools. So we've been able to maintain all of the extracurricular sports and arts opportunities that we have. We have a full arts team so that all of our students during the school day can still access a rich arts curriculum. And so, I feel like I have the best of both worlds to have a 10-year partnership with families. And when students get to be my people and the middle school people, we can still offer them the kinds of things that are going to be really, really powerful learning experiences and engaging experiences for them.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. Montez McNeil.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's kind of interesting the order we went in too. So we're a brand new K to eight, but we also live in the middle school world because we're not, the structure of our school is that we have a single general education strand, K to five, a single special education strand, K to five, but it's also K to eight coming into our students. And then we both, I call it the lollipop, and then we both on top. So we still are a feeder school for about five elementary schools, at least in this one, and other schools in the district. So we have both things going on. To speak a little bit about the transition, I feel that the transition as a K to eight was extremely successful. One of the things that was spoken about and I think needs to be reiterated is that being that we were the middle school and converting into a K to eight, safety was a huge concern for the parents. They're very nervous around, especially if they don't have older children. They're very nervous about the fact that we still have a large population of middle school students. So helping parents around the safety concerns is very important. We also were very careful and thoughtful about how to transition new staff to the building. And we wolfed them in very thoughtfully, spending off of team building exercises that we did at Yale Reservation at the end of the summer, as well as incorporating them into our ILT team, data leadership team, and whole staff meeting. We're still working on it, but I do agree with my colleagues in terms of the importance and the contribution that elementary has made for the middle school students and middle school staff and the value it added for our middle school students as role models for the students in the elementary. And there are so many benefits to having the students, again, I'm just in agreement with the reduction of the number of transitions for the students, the relationship building that Dr. Johnson referred to for families. It does take time for us to understand our family and their needs. And every time that students transition, then that's a new school that has to learn that. And it's very difficult when you're a feeder middle school to capture that information And I also would like to say that having the opportunity to really build school-like structures with open response, reading journals, many of which we've learned from other K to eight schools, and also building the first day math program within our building are all things that I think are going to really propel our students as they move forward now that they've been with us one year. So I am very pleased and very happy with the transition that was made at the Umana. And I look forward to the advances that we're going to make with our students because of the opportunity of being a K to eight. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for being here on the eve of the last day of school. I know you've got a million things to do before tomorrow. We do have air conditioning, which is nice. Just one question though for all of you, because I think one of the things that, you know, we hear time and time again is the importance of collaboration for teachers, for school leaders. As K through eight leaders, do you have opportunities throughout the year and throughout very hectic schedules to actually get together, share best practices and things like that, just as the K through eight leaders? One of you wants to speak to that?
So the work that Dr. Kamara has done with the middle school K to eighteen has really given us an opportunity and some freedom in that to work on some of these things like the inclusion, like the reading journals, as well as to explore areas of interest. So we have cohorts within our team looking at data, dual language, AVID, ELL. So inclusion. So we have, that was very thoughtfully done on part of Dr. Kamara and Almea Alveda, so that we have opportunities to work together in that way.
I was just going to say, I think the luxury of having the K to eight and the middle school principals meet in a network is that there is the cross-collaboration, that we do visit each other's schools. And that while the K to eights might have a little bit more expertise because of the elementary, especially in the early reading, the middle schools bring us forward in the math and the literacy, and we learn from each other. So it's a nice collaboration model too, to have both K to eights mindsets along with the middle schools. So we meet all together once a month formally, and then we go off to each other's schools in Florida.
Thank you all. What would you want to add?
Oh, just another piece in the collaboration. I mentioned that at the Edison, because we're large, we're able to have our own sports teams, but some of the smaller K to eights have figured out a way to collaborate and team up so that, you know, two schools might together, get together and have a basketball team or a volleyball team. So that's another way that we have collaborated.
Thank you all for being here and going on for the summer. Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is June McCraffer, the executive director of the Friends of Children Organization. Thank you for joining us, Mr. McCraffer.
I will definitely be, two, three. But thank you for having me. As you may know, I'm the executive director of Friends of Children, Boston. And the importance of K to eight schools resonates with our work because we are the only organization in Boston that looks at supporting young people inside the school and outside of the school. Five hours every week for 12 years. So we provide intensive mentoring with about 113 Boston public school students in about 35 different Boston public schools, five hours every week for 12 years. And so, we select new kindergarten and we want to stick with them for 12 years until they graduate from high school and push them towards post-secondary education and really college acceptance. So when I was asked to come and speak today, I really thought about why K to eight schools. I'm a former principal, also a former teacher, and I thought of sort of some bucket areas that make sense in terms of how we really want to think about our schools moving forward in the 21st century. And one of those pieces that stood out was this idea of really alignment and how with K through eight schools, you're really able to align your curriculum with teachers, right? And really lead to sort of collaboration around alignment and curriculum. And also, support services for students and be able to track a student over time around support services. We know that City Connects and other folks are doing great work in schools around providing holistic support, but the fact that K through eight schools allow you to really sort of have a child ideally for those nine years allows you to really sort of collaborate and also align academic achievement and work, but also some of the holistic support. Along with alignment was this idea of accountability. I think the K through eight schools allow you to be more accountable as we really look at sort of the learning needs and also academic achievement of young people in those schools, right? This idea that teachers who are in these K through eight schools can really align each other, support each other around academic achievement, and school leaders are able to hold teachers accountable versus having young people come from different schools at different times and gaps with different learning levels and trying to figure out how do you piece these pieces together? Sort of this idea that a lot of our middle schools are really sort of figuring out how to put the gumty back together again, so to speak, in terms of looking at all these different aspects of academic support that a lot of people need and then looking at different levels around ELA and math and science. And tying into that kind of, it's like the synergy, really sort of being able to only use data in a way that's very streamlined because you have a capture environment with your young people for those nine years. Those students are there for nine years. And so, how do you really use data to drive your work on a weekly basis with students from kindergarten to eighth grade and looking at the different levels and changes of those children over time and saying, how do you address the needs of these young people with this data? And how do you synergize amongst your staff and your faculty around this data? And as a nonprofit who's working in the schools as well as outside of the schools, this idea of synergizing data is important, just how we evaluate whether we're making progress with these young people on a daily basis. And I think that K through eight schools, the structure naturally allows for that. It's not something that needs to be created, it will reform again in some ways. And the last piece, and I think folks touched on this as well, is the idea of culture, right? How do you build culture? And I think K through eight schools allow you to truly build culture with your teachers and your staff, school leaders, around pieces that I spoke of before, but around academic achievement, around sort of being able to sort of really have teachers, create a space for teachers to really collaborate in a way across grade levels that looks at specific young folks over time and use data over time to really build a culture of excellence. I think it also enables parents to really think about, okay, my child's in the school for nine years. I know that that can align other parents to think about how do we support this school in a way that makes sense, right? You're building a culture through all these different levels and all the different contexts of students' lives. And I think that's another very important piece that we tend to push aside as compared to how our young people are moving through the systems here in the city. But to be able to have a child in a school for nine years allows parents to really think about building culture. And I think one of the major pieces of building that culture, if you look at successful schools, and I'm not sure if folks touched on some of Johns Hopkins research and some other research from UCLA, it's the idea that successful schools are places where the adults know children well. And the fact that you allow students to stay in school for nine years only cultivates that piece of numerous adults knowing their students well and being able to rely on each other to provide the best resources and the best knowledge capable to really address the specific needs of those young people on a daily basis. And so, that's why I feel that the importance of K through eight schools is a very, very natural environment for collaboration, for data synergy, for accountability, for building positive culture.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCraffer, for coming. I think it's particularly important to underscore that you're working, the students that Friends of Children are working with are the most at-risk students in the city of Boston. So your enthusiasm that is the model that will serve our most needy students is really underscoring it for us.
And so, and thank you for recognizing that, Ms. Campbell. The reality is the fact that we're selecting the highest risk based on a clear rubric and based on family history, being able for us as a nonprofit to go under a school and know that they've had that child for nine years, and going to rely on those school leaders and teachers to give us information that we can see over time, is just valuable as we think about how we support them and support their family outside of the school bar. And so, it's extremely, extremely pragmatic to think about how do we support young people in a way that provides a continuum over time.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCraffer. Thank you for the work you do with Boston Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Diana Lamb, head of school, the Conservatory Lab Charter School, and a member of the District Charter Compact. Welcome to the room.
Thank you. I was a former middle school teacher and a former middle school principal here in the Boston Public Schools. We usually talk about the disconnect between research and practice. And so, today, what I, you know, had planned to say, has already been said in so many different ways and probably more eloquently than many others. So basically, I validate the insights of the research based on experience and work in the field. We were at Conservatory Lab, a pre-K through grade five school. That was a tremendous problem for us. Why? Because, you know, charter schools, other charter schools start in grade five and then they go all the way to grade 12. And if one of our students got a seat, I mean, it's wonderful, a school as we think we are, they want to they wanted to go because it would guarantee them a seat all the way to high school. It meant only one transition. So, a couple of years ago, I surveyed every single family at the school, and that's basically what I want to share with you. Every family was in favor of us going for an expansion amendment over charter so that we could convert to, go all the way to grade eight. And here are some of the reasons they gave besides the transitions, and I think that's, everybody has addressed that. They said, they talked about the density of adolescent-age children. Yes, of course, they are a very special group. They have very special needs. We need to address those needs in ways that are different, perhaps, of how we address them with our elementary-school-age children. But having 400 and having, you know, 100, I mean, it's a major difference, it makes the work of addressing the needs of this particular population so much more possible because it's in smaller groupings. So, that was one that I hadn't really thought before, but that the parents brought up. The second, they brought a positive school culture. Elementary schools are kind of known for their closeness and their warmth and their welcoming attitudes, and, you know, you go to most elementary schools, whether they are district schools, charter schools, even private schools, and there is a real feel of a culture in the settings. And so, it is much easier, not impossible to do it in a middle school, because I think there are also many examples of that. But it's easier to extend that positive school culture into the middle grades when there is a K-8. The obvious one for parents was, you know, kind of better discipline, you know, safer. For one thing, they've known everybody since the kids started school, so it was, there was no fear of the unknown. I don't know how, what the data would show for BPS in terms of K-8s, but almost like no discipline problems, almost, you know? Certainly, no suspensions. And so, that's a certain data point that we should look at. The other piece, which was interesting that parents mentioned, and some of the other speakers have also mentioned, is the opportunity that exists in a K-8 for service and leadership on the part of young people. When people serve others, that's when they are at their best. When they take on leadership role, then there's ownership about something. In our school, you know, we have student ambassadors, they do the tours for any visitor that comes, I mean, they're really well versed, they pride themselves, you know? They can go into that pre-K class, and they can explain what a pre-K is doing, or they can go into a second grade and they know all their expeditions that happen. But something really interesting also happened just recently, which I thought was, it's worth mentioning. It's also good for older students to understand and to value that younger students have also something to offer. So, recently, our kindergarten students who had just completed a nutrition unit, and they've done a fabulous job. I mean, those kids know what a protein is, and what are the food groups, and why do we need vitamins, so on and so forth. And the fifth graders who are going to start something on nutrition, at a more sophisticated level, of course, but it was the work of the kindergarten students, them going to the fifth grade to basically say, well, this is kind of what we learned. Do you have any questions? And so, that dynamic is just brings a school alive, and makes it like really appealing, engaging, and that's why I think we get chosen quite a bit, to, parents choose the schools and their children there. Now, in terms of programmatically, you know, I think there can be excellent middle schools, too, and there can be also excellent K-8s. Programmatically, you still need to address the needs of that age group. So, whether you do it in a K-8 setting or you do it in a middle school setting, there will have similarities. Student engagement, I mean, you know, we don't want kids bored, whether it's in a K-8 or in a middle school. But where is it more possible to get that? You know, so again, we're talking about K-8, not as it's gonna solve everything, but it's a structure that has so much potential to encourage the right practices for adolescents. And so, that's where I'm going with it. Strong advisory and emphasis on social-emotional learning, I mean, all good middle schools do that. There's no reason why we couldn't do that in K-8s, and actually, good K-8s do that. And if they even go further down, they don't just do it with a middle school grade. You need kind of a multidisciplinary approach to learning, you need to be, do hands-on learning. And just to end, I don't want to make a comment on what somebody mentioned before in terms of quality. Of quality, the trumping everything. So, I agree with that statement. So, then the question for us, for you, becomes one of, okay, where do we think, you know, or parents think, that we can get to that quality in a much easier way, perhaps a faster way? You can get it from both, I think. You know, but if you have to choose, and if you wanted to figure out what to allocate your resources, I think you have to ask yourself those questions. And the other one is the issue of facilities. I think it was the same speaker that mentioned something about facilities. I mean, it's so true, you know, I wish I had a cafeteria and a gymnasium and everything. But it would be a shame if we only thought about facilities. And in fact, if the district does its own facilities planning, it would be wise, you know, to really look at what are those must-have that schools should have, not only middle schools and high schools, but that elementary schools or K-8s also need. So, I think that those two pieces made a lot of sense, but I also think there are other questions that come out of that. And just my final note is, I certainly want to commend Superintendent Johnson for that growth in K-8 schools. I mean, I think that's fantastic, not just growth in the number of schools, but also tremendous growth in the number of students attending K-8 schools. So, having worked in the district and also being part of a charter school now, I would say, if this is what parents are desiring, I mean, that's really a good way to minimize the student exit at the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lamb. Our next speaker is Carolyn Kane, Chair of the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Kane.
Good evening, Mrs. Tammer, Ms. Campbell. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and for inviting SpedPAC to participate in this panel. I'm Carolyn Kane, I'm the Chair of Boston SpedPAC, and I'm also a member of the External Advisory Committee for Assignment. I'm not representing that committee here this evening, but I think it's important for us to sort of hear the information and know all the issues that are out there so that we can be informed members of the committee and to bring up issues as we look at the whole assignment process, and, you know, what models may or may not be created as a result of that. So, I do think it's important. I would also say that, you know, yesterday was the moving on ceremony for my daughter's fifth-grade class at the Henderson School, and how I was really sad because, you know, those kids had been with my daughter all throughout elementary school, and I was thinking about where they were gonna go. And fortunately for a lot of them, they have the pathway to the Harbor School, and that was selected by a good number of them, so they will continue on together. But there's also a portion of the population that we lose to the charter schools and also to the exam schools. And I think that, you know, it's the population that's left to participate in the sixth through eighth grade that we want to look at, because I can say as the Chair of SpedPAC that many of those are children with disabilities. They don't get into the exam schools, and they're also unlikely to be maintained in a charter school, even if they are accepted through a lottery process. Unfortunately, the data that we have over the last several years show that a lot of children with disabilities eventually return from the charter schools, and I think that requires us to be really thoughtful in our educating the charter schools, on how we educate children with disabilities, what the requirements are by law to do that, and how does the district's toward to support that effort. But nonetheless, the outcome is the fact that the children that we have in the district to serve through grades six through eight are the children with disabilities, they're the children for whom English is a second language, and they're also in large part the underachievers in our schools. So, when we look at that and we look at what's important to children, I would say that Dr. Johnson was very on point when she talked about stability and predictability. And I think that the data shows, and I have looked at a number of studies on this issue itself, in terms of what is the academic outcome and what is the social outcome? Because I think that, you know, for all students, it's important not just about their academic development, but their social and emotional development as well. And I would say that the children with special needs, as Dr. Johnson did know, transitions are something that are much more difficult in going into not only, you know, a different cohort of peers, but also just into a different school building, not being familiar with the environment, and having to change sort of what your daily routine is, and where do you go, what classroom are you going into. So, a K-8 does provide unparalleled predictability in that way that a K-5 and then a middle school does not. I mean, we look to see what transitions are necessary and when are they beneficial? And I think that when the whole middle school issue came out years ago, that it was very well-intentioned, but I think that, like everything in life, we have to go back and look and see whether or not it produced the benefits that we were looking for it to do. And the fact is that there's a number of studies out there, and I haven't seen one to the contrary, that that's just not true for middle schools. So, the question would be is, why do we continue to have them? I can't speak from a district perspective in terms of facilities, what the feasibility is to change more schools from the current 25 to even more K-8s, but I think it's something that we really need to take a hard look at and say, where can we do better, and how do we benefit these kids? And again, not just academically, but socially, and certainly with regard to families. I mean, I know that I have established lifelong friendships with families from my daughter's elementary school, and I think that that's important, you know, to know that it's a community that's important, it's not just you're going to school. It is a community, and it's something that you're becoming part of, and those are people that you will continue to have relationships with and who can support you, especially during those school years. And middle school is when kids are entering puberty. Kids enter puberty much younger nowadays than they did when I was growing up a few years ago. And, you know, the fact is, is it's coming much sooner chronologically, and so, we're going through changes with hormones and, you know, adolescence, and girls that are 10 years old or nine years old are now confronting with issues that I think about that I didn't even know anything about until I was 16 or 17 years old. So, it's a really different world, and I think that the K-8 provides the opportunity to maybe keep those kids in childhood a little bit longer, in that when they go to middle school, you sort of confront the issues more of, you know, peer pressure and even cliques and things of that nature, that in middle school, in K-8 school, it's sort of, you know everybody, you've been with them, you've grown up with them, and then, you know, you do have the siblings in it. And then, kids are gonna be better peer models when they know that there's someone related to them in the school, and they want someone watching out for their sibling away, but they won't know as well. So, I'm certainly not an expert on K-8 and what the issues are, but I can certainly read, and I've read a lot of the information, and it's very supportive of the fact that middle schools came into existence, and whatever the reasons were that they did, they have not brought about the academic results that we were seeking, they have not brought about the social results that we were seeking for all children. And then, the children with disabilities, those things are much more difficult for them to attain to begin with, in that by adding this fragmentation in sort of the K-8 years, it makes what's already a vulnerable population even more vulnerable to changes that are gonna exist. And I think that, you know, we have the highly specialized strands currently, and we're looking to have those in K-8 schools. And, you know, quite honestly, we don't have enough K-8 schools in that, you know, the ability to find a young within a K-8, to have that speak, to have that strand go all the way from kindergarten to the eighth grade needs to exist. So, I think sort of in looking at the whole thing in terms of equity and quality and sort of what is, what is it that parents want? Well, I think that it's pretty obvious that every parent wants a best-of-the-git child. But then, we also have to look at what's available, and what resources do we have to be able to provide it? And I think that the continuity piece and the stabilization piece cannot be underbaffled, cannot be, you know, understated in terms of what that provides to a family. And I think that we heard from the principals quite eloquently that it's also an issue of sharing curriculum, sharing practices, sharing experiences when one worked with a child and now the child's further along, and sort of how do we, how do we tie that all together to provide the stability for the child throughout those years? And that just simply doesn't exist when you go from a K-5 to a middle school. You know, that chain of communication is forever broken. So, I think that the benefits clearly outweigh anything else that I've seen to the contrary. I guess the real question is, is what's the feasibility to increase them, given that we have a limited number of financial resources? But we obviously want to maximize the outcome and the academic and social outcomes a much better in a K-8 environment.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. We actually have an article that's out on the table, I think it's called "The Middle School Mess," and it talks a lot about the adolescent hormones that you referred to. And it is, you know, I think it is such a multifaceted issue, and I think that's one of the things, like, the weird beneficiaries of having people speaking from all different backgrounds, because everyone, you know, there's a lot of continuity, but I think everyone agrees it's an interesting viewpoint as well. And, you know, there was this probably a pretty harsh quote from a fellow who's a senior policy analyst at UMass who said, "Middle schools are the great disaster of the American education system." And if you look what's happening around the country right now, districts like Philadelphia, Charlotte Mecklenburg are increasing and expanding K-8s. It's another large district that's escaping me right now. But what's very interesting, and I plan to look a little more into this, is that Cambridge, which has had, I believe, 11 K-8s for a very long time, just voted to go back to, they're doing a lower school and upper school model, where the upper school will be grade six through eight housed in five of the elementary schools in Cambridge. So, there's still gonna be under one roof, but the idea is to have, you know, two separate...
But that's the Republic of Cambridge.
Exactly. It's a little different in Cambridge, that is absolutely true, but thank you for being here tonight, and for all the points that you raised and for the community that you represented.
And I do think it's important to look at the fact that, you know, because of kids moving on to either the exam schools or charter schools, and, you know, of course, the brave parents and children need opportunities, but the issue is, is that for the children that are the most needy, those are the ones that seem to be dealing with the split between the K-5 to 6th through 8. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Vivia Carter, the Executive Director of the Grand Circle Foundation. She's up here? I think she might not be with us. And we have Ron Walker, the Executive Director of the Coalition of Schools Educating Boys of Color. Unfortunately, could not join us, but Ms. Campbell has a statement that I thought you sent to us that you're gonna read?
Yes.
It's not very long, but, okay, very short.
Read it for the record. Thank you. Mr. Walker is the Executive Director of the Coalition of Schools Educating Boys of Color, and this is his statement. My name is Ron Walker. I am the Executive Director of the Coalition of Schools Educating Boys of Color, and this relatively young organization is dedicated to the affirmative development and education of boys and young men of color. I have a fortunate and happy career in education and have spent four decades in many wonderful educational experiences and opportunities. One of the best and most significant was as principal of a K-8 school in Cambridge, Massachusetts from 1984 to 1992. Prior to that experience, I served as a middle school assistant principal in Belmont, a junior high school teacher in Philadelphia, and a principal of the Cambridge Bridge and Latin School High School for two years. I'm pleased to say without reservation or any hesitation, the most rewarding time of my career was at as a K-8 principal. Here are a few of my reasons. It's a very powerful reality to see the growth, development, and transformation of children from childhood to adolescent in an effective K-8 environment.
of children from childhood to adolescent in an effective K to eight environment. This transformation takes place under the watch of teachers, other educators, and support staff who believe that knowing students well is an essential element of a culture. I have participated and witnessed numerous discussions that reinforce the critical importance of child and adolescent development. Next, from my experience as a K to eight educator, I witnessed powerful mentoring relationships between older and younger students. In this setting, the authentic nature of the mentoring relationships was molded and reinforced by the reality that older students understood what the younger ones were going through. Next, during my tenure at K to eight, I also encouraged and witnessed deep collaboration across and between the faculty members. Study groups and teams were established both in grade alike and across grade configurations. This ability to look broadly across the grade span and still focus on grade expectations and results allow us to develop a robust vision and mission for all students. To strongly support the K to eight model, it allows for personalized learning, greater depth of knowledge about every student, and opens up genuine channels of communication between educators, parents, and advocates for students. It truly was the most fulfilling educational chapter of my career. Next, we have Nicole O'Brien, who's a parent at the Condon Elementary School. Thank you, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the impact of school configuration and school choice. I'm a member of the school site council at the Condon School in South Austin, and I'm speaking on behalf of our school. We have been engaged in conversations for most of this year about how we, as parents, can advocate for our school to become a K to eight school. This is not a new phenomenon, parents at the Condon, but we feel with the ongoing conversations about school choice, this is our best opportunity to make our voices heard. The Condon School is one of three schools recently awarded a three-year Ed Vester School Improvement Grant totaling $3 million. Our school serves an extremely diverse student population of 800 children. 22% of our children are special education students. 33% are English language learners. 84% identify as low-income. Our school partners with many community groups to serve our families, including the Greater Boston Food Bank, which held its first mobile food bank at our school last month and was able to serve almost 600 people and give away 9,000 pounds of food. To meet the needs of our population, our school has many different models and programs in place to ensure that every student has the tools they need to be successful. We have developmental daycare classrooms for children with severe developmental disabilities. The students range from age three to 12 years old. All are in wheelchairs, usually requiring intensive assistance to complete activities. We have sheltered English immersion classrooms for grades K through five, and one substantially interrupted formal education classroom for students in grades three through five who spoke, who speak little to no English. Beginning in second grade, we have an in-class class model, which includes students with learning disabilities as well as regular education students. In addition, we have three substantially separate learning disabled classrooms, a primary transition classroom for younger students, three pre-K integrated classrooms, and lastly, we have advanced work for grades four and five. With these different programs, our students have different and diverse needs that the Condon School is trying its best to meet. But our wonderful school is a tip parade. All of the relationships that are made and the progress our teachers and families experience is interruptive when students go to middle school, or worse, earlier, if a family has an option to switch to a K to eight school. In South Austin, our choices are limited in grades six through eight. There's only one K to eight school in our neighborhood, which has a total enrollment of just over 200 students. The closest middle school is the McCormick in Dorchester, which has a partnership with the Denver, making it a challenge for all our students to be assured of place together. Transitioning to this school for only three short years puts our students at a disadvantage as they are removed from their learning community in place with children who have been together three years in the Denver. Additionally, the proposition to increase the McCormick's school day to 5:45 concerns parents who have children participating in community activities, including activities they engage in at Condon, such as after-school enrichment, sports programs, and swim team. The Harvard School also has a partnership with the Henderson, which raises similar concerns. In the current zone configuration, the only standalone middle school without a partnership is the Rogers in Hyde Park. And with its start time of 7:45, it means our children have to leave very, very early for a long bus trip and return home late in the evening. It also means family engagement at events and parent council meetings would be a challenge for many parents due to distance. It seems that breaking the district into smaller zones will ultimately eliminate this choice as well. Families of the Condon want consistent school culture. We want a continuation of the strong foundation our children have experienced at the Condon. We have amazing teachers and committed leadership at our school. We have people throughout the building who know our children's needs and want them to succeed. Our school does not fall behind in the list of requested schools and doesn't have a weakness that the other schools may have. If you talk to parents, myself included, we have similar stories. We love this school, but long-term, how does a K five school impact our family? Many families, again, mine included, will talk about the Condon not being a top choice. And our family of support and the sole reason was the K five configuration. Our families want a school in our neighborhood that has everything we want for our children and we want it long-term. And on personal note, a seven-year-old asked that I add that our kids want this. They want to visit their teachers as they get older and stay with their friends. With everything our school has in its favor, it made sense to expand, to continue, what we have come to love at the Condon School. We hope as the conversation about school choice continues, K to eight schools will be part of the discussion and we hope our school is considered for expansion.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. How many children do you have?
I have two. One is a rising second grader, and the other one will be attending the Condon the following year.
Both swimmers, I hope?
Both swimmers.
Our swimmers went swimming team.
Because I used to swim there, so.
It's a very much an added bonus to our school.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I just have one question, but thank you for coming and thank you. Son says, we were talking about, we didn't have two boys here. That was real on this and that. I'm just wondering, you said you've been working on this. Is this just this year or before? What does working on it mean?
Sure. This is my first year as a parent at the Condon. When I joined the school site council, there had been conversations ongoing about what we would need to do and who we would need to talk to. So our meetings this year have focused on inviting our elected officials to be part of our conversations to support moving forward and to have conversations with people at the district level about who we would need to talk to and what kind of proposal we should have and what it should include. So this has been an ongoing throughout the year project.
Great. I was just at the end of the hearing, we could just talk for a minute so we can get together with this school department people so we can make sure you're working together. Great, and we do have a letter from Councilor Livinghand that we could enter into the record, Ms. Campbell, supporting the parents' desires to transition to a K to eight school. So, thank you so much for being with us tonight. You heard that? Presenter, and then before we get to public comment, is Miley Carter from the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. All right. So I recently graduated from the Harvard Graduate School of Education in the School Leadership Program. I also taught everything from second through eighth grade in two different K to eight schools and also in a K five school. And while at Harvard this past year, I conducted research on the question of whether most charter students come from, enrolled in grades five through 12, come from parochial, independent BPS district or other charter schools. And I found that the majority of students currently enrolled in charter schools across the city of Boston do come from Boston district schools. And based on about 80% of the charter schools of Boston that serve middle and high school students, more than 60% of the new students were previously enrolled in Boston district schools. Interestingly, charter schools accepting applicants in fifth and sixth grade see even higher rates of students from district schools, over 70%. So students are leaving district schools and going to charter schools, and particularly in fifth and sixth grade. And if we want students to stay in the district, providing parents with the option to send their students to K to eight schools may serve as an incentive to keep students in the district rather than having them leave to charter schools in their fifth grade. A lot of the other research that was mentioned tonight and further research that I looked at regarding grade configuration predicts significant benefits of K to eight schools, including decreased dropout rates, decreased behavior referrals, increased rates of attendance, and increased academic achievement. Most of that has been spoken to because students experience fewer transitions. So, um, parents deserve that choice to provide their students the opportunity to succeed in a K to eight school. And thank you very much. Hope you continue to make the choices for students like this.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Thank you for this very interesting point, as the cap has been lifted on charter school seats. And so I always ask, make this question, is it 800 or 1,000 for next year?
It's 1,000.
Or is it 1,000 for next year? And we don't even know for the year after, right?
Well, no, oh, no, there's already, I think it's 1,200, 1,500 that haven't been used yet and an additional 1,000. So we're only talking about 2,500.
But you said, just to be clear, so over 60% of the kids who are, of the children enrolled in charter schools are children who were formerly enrolled in the BPS, correct?
Correct.
And greater than 70% of fifth and sixth graders?
Of the ones that train fifth and sixth grade. So the charter schools that take students in fifth and sixth grade.
So that's where, okay.
So students are leaving the district and going into charter schools at that time they commit to charter schools.
Great, very interesting to know where we start to lose our customer base. So, thank you very much for that information. And now we're going to move over to public comment. Ms. Pedrazza?
Yes. The first speaker we have tonight is Bala Iyon.
Yes, thank you.
Teacher at the Bates K to five school. Thank you, Ms. Iyon.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Ms. Campbell, it's time. Secretary. I'm from the Republic of China. I live in Cambridge. And I'm very disappointed that Cambridge has changed its school policies. I'm a teacher, a parent, and I was involved in the merger on the Millet Avenue, which is a middle school. I was the coordinator of that merger. I had 10 staff, five from the elementary school and five from the avenue, who worked together to put the schools together. I love the K to eight. As I said, my son is a graduate of K to eight. I taught at the Rockville Hernandez, which was an excellent example of the K to eight school. I taught at another school, I won't mention the name of that school unless you ask me, that was K to eight that failed. And the success of the K to eight system depends on leadership, a strong, qualified managerial, pedagogical administration, parent participation. And it also has a lot to do with where the K through eight school resides. Community and culture can affect the strength or weakness of the K through eight system. At the Hernandez School, where the late and great moderator Denise taught for several years, and I had the pleasure of working under her administration for several of those years, exemplified what a K through eight school system should consist of. Not only because of the dual language that was applied there where many of our fourth graders, four-year-olds, came into the system unable to speak English. And within six months, they were able to speak in broken English. The success of that school centered on the fact that four out of, four members of the staff received Golden Apples. I think three members received Teacher of the Year. Moderator, of course, Apple has mentioned as Principal of the Year. So with those factors, 97% parent participation, absenteeism of staff, under .0% children, we have four classes on the last day of school. And many teachers are secretly saying, "You don't have to come to our..." Our staff was...
It's not a secret.
It's not a secret. Our staff at the Hernandez are saying, "This is your business. This is your job." And not many people would stay home without paying. So why should our children stay home when they're sure of what education they need? So the Hernandez, I think, will be a beautiful template for any K to eight school that's starting up. The other school, unless, of course, you ask me today, began as a one-to-eight school, and I said help with the merger. The parents were excited because, of course, as many of these administrators said, parents want their children, particularly who have more than one child, to attend the same school. And many parents in that community were very happy to hear about the merger and the fact that their sixth graders could now bring their little brothers and sisters to school and also come home with them. Also, if there were problems at the school or the need for parents to visit the school, they didn't have to go to one community for one child's issues and then travel across town to another child's issues. The school did not succeed because those things that I mentioned, administration, parenting, highly qualified teachers, a total commitment of the staff to buy into the K to eight program was not there. So therefore, it failed. And now I believe it's going to be a four-to-eight school next year. I don't know what's going to happen after that. I think the principles was felt prior to my presence, particularly Ms. Triscoll, who I had an opportunity to work with her for three years, an excellent administrator. The three reasons that I think that the Boston Public School should continue fostering the K through eight system, and one that may be K through 12, is that the fact that students' voices need to be heard on this as well. The students enjoy the K through eight program. We do, and I think in Cambridge, they said that the K to eight program kept the six, seventh grade as childlike. We don't separate our families, but we have families of five or six children in varying age groups. We don't divide our homes and say, "We're going to put our 11 and 12-year-olds on the upstairs floor and our little kids on the first floor." And what happens in these, in the student, in that pattern, the children grow to love one another. It's like big brothers and big sisters. The teachers tend to become more parent-oriented as opposed to teachers. Many times I've been called mother by the slip of the tongue. And then the kids wonder, "Why am I referring to as a mother?" Because in the K to eight system that I worked in, teachers took more than just a pedagogical interest in that child because you have that time. I had a little girl who I had, when she was four years old, come to me and say, "Ms. Barnes, today I'm home." She was 12 years old. Excuse me, she was 10 years old because that's changed. All right, their boys come to me, "Good morning, Ms. Barnes." And their voices changed. As a teacher, I got to see that change. As an educator, the second-grade teachers would meet with the third-grade teachers. Second-grade is, third-grade teachers would say, "This is what we need from you to prepare those children for third grade." Second-grade teachers would say, "What do you need from me?" And this would continue on through the eighth grade. So now that kindergarten child who is now 13, we now know exactly what their child has received, what schools would be best fitted when they're choosing their high schools. And the K to eight model is just exemplified. My fear is that if we do not make sure that the leadership, the staff, and the parental involvement are at its highest potential, the K to eight model that is so successful will end up as this one school that failed. And the failure came from also safety. Because we had lost control of our older children, it was not safe for the little ones. Bus rides were horrendous. So the K to eight model is wonderful, but the school department, along with Dr. Johnson and other members of the committee and other members of the administration, they need to have one of those undercover bus visits, where you come in maybe as a custodian. Or somewhere, sometimes the information you get is colored because we want to put our best foot forward. And if our best information is not adequate, then we're not going to blacken the information. So I think it would behoove the school committee members and Dr. Johnson to once in a while take the opportunity to visit these schools so that they can continue to provide our children a K to eight model. And I think this is important.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Thank you for your statement.
The speaker is John from Massachusetts. Have his opportunity.
Our final speaker for this evening, Mr. Myley. Welcome.
Thank you, you know, for allowing me to speak. I know even less about this than you do, so thank you for indulging me. I am a proponent, having had three kids who went through the K to eight system in the Republic of Cambridge. And, you know, so I'm here, you know, talking in support of where the system has been moving. And I congratulate you on holding a hearing license and try and continue the momentum. If I speak as somebody who has worked in government structures and is an advocate for many years, I would just reiterate what you and actually the prior speaker were saying, that structure isn't the answer. isn't the answer itself. So the critical questions we have to ask are, under what conditions do structures really realize the goals that we have for them? And structures can create opportunities, but they can also foreclose opportunities. So if I just had to pick a crude example here, my kids were at Grand Park. It was great. They all had excellent experiences. It was terrific leadership, great teachers by and large, and they, you know, they did very well. And if I looked at this chart that Dr. Johnson, you know, presented earlier, you know, it seems to show that, as he said, there's a wide variation in quality. So it's a very small dots here. My eyes aren't that good, and I think seven of the, you know, schools of ELA, nine in that are low-performing and low-progress schools. So what does that tell us, and what are we going to do about that? Another message that I continue to reiterate is, when we get reports like this, I wish we would explicitly deal with the achievement gap. And that's not just me. I mean, Chair has said it, Superintendent has said it, every time we consider an issue, let's look hard at achievement gap, both the racial and the problematic. And I just wish that we had some data. Both of you mentioned the issue, and we're probing with, I forgot, Dr. Harper.
Dr. West.
You know, whether, he was a little ambiguous. The statistics here show that we have under enrollment of African-Americans and over enrollment of whites. I don't know, as we go, I hope, to expansion, what does that mean, and what are we going to learn from that? And this is going to be an increasing issue. And as Mary Tabor knows, serving on the Student Assignment Committee, one of the key issues will be equity and access to quality education. That's a key principle that parents have looked at and that we all want to analyze. In 2004, we really looked at, was there a K-8 in the district? Was there an option? And as however, Dr. Lam reminded us, quality trumps all. So now this time, we're going to need to look not just, is there a K-8, is it a performing K-8? Because, you know, I don't know if I said it earlier, but, you know, the structure creates opportunity. And as people have said, it ensures some kind of continuity and predictability. That's great if you're in a school like, my kids were, it was performing. What if you're in a school that's not performing? And it cuts down your option of getting out of that environment. So, you know, or maybe, it may or may not, you know, cut that down. But I'm just phrasing that question. So what are the achievement gap? What is, what are the lessons we've learned, you know, from, you know, the experience? In Cambridge, I just quickly Google, you know, what they're doing. I think they're keeping the structure. I think a lot of it was an issue that they had wide variation in attendance at the upper grades. So they consolidated the seventh grade, you know, in four schools. But they had a lot of parent complaints. They had commissions and studies and research papers. So what did they learn? Is there anything that they learned that might be relevant to us? I mean, I think they appointed, decided they needed to have strength in the administration, deemed for what they called upper school. You know, they needed to have a guidance counselor, to deal with mentoring and guidance, you know, in transition. They had strengthened, I think the central office support for curriculum so that it was consistent. And I'm not an expert in this. So all I'm suggesting is if we have a huge body of attention, let's find out. So the bottom line is, yes, great, let's move to expanding. But what are the, what have we learned in the lessons to make those expanded schools carry out the transition better? What are the conditions that we've learned are necessary to make it work, and what can we do for the low-performing K-8s to bring them up this level? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Thank you. I, you know, of course, I just really want to thank Ms. Seymour and I, want to thank you very much for coming. We started talking about this and have been asking for data. We're kind of, I guess, getting now for asking for a lot of data questions. And one of the questions we had asked for was looking at the MCAS data, 2011 by grade, what are the rankings of the top schools? And receiving this data today, it was just undersporing that, and interesting, and to me, a little surprising. I have to have been even on a big, I've been a K-8 advocate for about 13 years, that there's not a single middle school listed in the top performing school, not one, at a single BPS middle school in grade six, seven, or eight in the whole city. And I still taught at Timotee, you know, 30 years ago. I know we've been working on middle schools for a really long time. So I think there are some best practices to take from middle schools, and I really know that we've got some K-8s that really need light shine, shone on them, shining on them, so that we jumpstart them into excellent schools. And I don't think we should tolerate a single underperforming school. But I feel very strongly that tonight, there's been really a lot of conversation and dialogue about, whoa, let's revisit this, let's take a closer look, but also let's make an action plan for what is feasible and how is it linked to the student assignment. I was really grateful, Ms. Bond, that you mentioned the two-way bilingual, because I think as we look at schools and we look at the issue of equity, and especially as we look at student assignment, and if we bring up the issue of not having a citywide two-way bilingual school, then what about the issue of a two-way bilingual school, for instance, in East Boston, where you have such a density of second language learners? So I feel like, as a school committee member, you've given us our charge to really roll up our sleeves and get to work here on, you know, how we can take this to the next level. And I would just firmly ask that you hold us accountable, because while this is the first hearing in quite some time, we hope it's not the last, and we hope it's not just talk. We're not here to just talk. We are here to take action and make progress. With your help, we can do it, but without your help, we can't. And that's the help of the school department, the superintendent's leadership, but all of you within the public who are working so hard to make the schools better.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I share everything that Ms. Campbell just said, and really appreciate everyone who came here tonight and testified for us. I think that we accomplished, I think, sort of what we wanted to, which was really just to have a healthy, open dialogue about this particular model. I don't think it was meant to be an indictment of middle schools in any way. But I go back to one of the things that Professor West said, that it's not, you know, and I think other people shared the sentiment, that there were some very good middle schools, there are some very good K-8 schools. There is no, unfortunately for all of us, there's no magic bullet, there's no panacea, no simple solution. But I think that, as Dr. West said, it's just easier to run a successful K-8 school than it is to run a successful middle school. And I think we need to keep looking at that. Ms. Campbell mentioned the MCAS data. I was also struck by the fact that two of our two-way bilingual schools, both the Hernandez and the Hurley School, are listed as top MCAS performers within this document. So I think it was a very interesting bit of information. I just want to quickly go over some of the things, you know, some of the consistent things that we heard this evening. We talked about at K-8 schools, strengthen the curriculum, the reduction in transitions for our students, the predictability for families, the social emotional supports and the importance of that, particularly for adolescents who are going through just a whole list of things as I'm finding out. The cultural continuity for families, for faculty, for students. The leadership piece for the older children in the school. I think we really can't undervalue those mentoring opportunities. As Ms. Lam mentioned, I agree with her that we are at our best, we're helping others. And I think for children to have that opportunity. Also, the issues of access for students with disabilities. I also completely agree with Ms. Kane, and I think those mentoring opportunities for all children and opportunities to be leadership, to have leadership opportunities for all of our students who can benefit. And also, the thought of Henderson School, and for those fifth-grade students, I think the continuity of relationships among our children, among our children and our faculty and our school leaders, I think we can't, you just can't place a value on something like that. I think the charter school piece is really critical, and I appreciate Ms. Carter bringing that up for us tonight. When we look at students that we are losing, knowing that more charter schools will be opening up and are on the horizon, and I say this as I sit next to my esteemed colleague who leads a very successful charter school and is teaching me a lot about charter schools, which I appreciate, I think this is something we have to consider. If we lose our customers, where are we and who are we? And then I think that parental peace of mind, when we talk about safety, when we talk about discipline, again, these are things, and I say this as a parent of two children in the schools, to have that peace of mind of knowing that your child is in a good place, that you know the faculty, that they know you. I think these are, there's so many pieces to this puzzle, and I think that they're all valuable. There's, you know, every single piece, you really can't weigh one heavier than another. So we will end there. Thank you again for coming out on this hot night. We appreciate it, and we, this is not the last we'll hear on this topic. So thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Bond.